The only other thing that I have is, I don't know if anybody was watching television yesterday, but the Pats won the Super Bowl in glorious fashion, and that's all I have to say.
Okay, Mayor Collins, have a lovely evening. Welcome aboard, Tom. I'm glad to have you join us up here. And just, this isn't really village business, but it's for citizens and for our students. A lot of scholarships are coming up for high school students, since we get many in the room here that have to come out for the different events. Watch the deadlines. There's a lot of scholarship money out there between many of the organizations, the township, the different social areas where it's, you know, Rotary and Lions and all that. And so, don't miss out on those opportunities. Get some scholarship money, because I know some of those deadlines are coming due.
Are there any other trustee comments?
One of my favorite comments that trustee Jim Marasich, or former trustee Jim Marasich memorialized in 2011 when Dan Rippey was first sworn in. He had told Dan, he said, "When in doubt, just do what I do." I'll never forget that. Very, very good sense of humor. But I just want to welcome Tom to the board, and it's a pleasure to have you here.
I also would like to welcome Tom to the board. It's my chair. You've got my chair now. And I was sick the last board meeting, the last televised meeting. I just wanted to express my support for the Pace Project with the other trustees here. I think it's a great asset to the Village of Plainfield. Also, what I'd like to see, I mentioned this to Mr. Murphy during my travels during the holidays. I attended the Kindle Market in Naperville, and the Commons in New Lennox, and the Light Festival in Oswego. And I'd like to see if maybe, I haven't talked to any of the other board members, if you guys would be interested in doing something in the winter for the residents. You know, light up the back of the village hall, or do something, you know, to make it more of a Christmas feel in town.
Are there any other trustee comments?
I have one more comment. Trustee Wojo brought up several months ago, so I want to give him credit for it. He had asked about providing a safe place for transactions where people sell items on Facebook and Craigslist, possibly at the police station where there would be video surveillance. And we're not going to necessarily guarantee it's safe, because something bad can happen anywhere at any time. But I think it may be a viable asset if we look at the way other communities have done it. If we've already implemented it and are unaware of it, great, good job. But if we're in the process, I was curious where the process was.
Yeah, we are in the process of doing it, and Chief can speak to where we're at.
We were in the process of installing the cameras. Lo and behold, when the building was built several years ago, there were some wiring issues, if you will, that popped up when we were installing the cameras. So it is getting very close. It should be happening here within the next few weeks. When that happens, we will have a site dedicated in the front of the police department for internet exchange purposes, and we will be putting out press releases and social media, letting the public know when that is operational.
Excellent. Thank you. I think that'll be a great service, and thank you, trustee Wojo, for bringing that up. I've had other residents since ask me, you know, can we do that? So I think that's a positive. Thank you.
Welcome, trustee Ruane as well. But following on trustee Peck's comment, trustee Rasic was totally unpredictable. So you can say anything you want, then get away with it, because who knows what he would have said at any point in time. So anyway, welcome and have fun. It's enjoyable.
Are there any other trustee comments?
Testing. It's my first mic. I'd like to thank the mayor and the board, first of all, for giving me this opportunity. It is an honor. I know most of you from various community events and things we do about in our community. It is an honor to be here, and I hope to do my best here and represent Plainfield and the village to my best ability. And I don't think I could ever fell Jim's shoes. I had the opportunity to talk to him. I've known Jim for a long time. He's given me his support. And alls I could say, Jim, if you're watching, I'll do my best.
Are there any other trustee comments? This would be time for public comments. If there are no public comments, then we will proceed with the business meeting. We're seeking a motion to amend the agenda to remove item number 12.
That's my motion.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded to amend the agenda to remove item number 12. Trustee Peck?
Yes.
Trustee Ruane?
Yes.
Trustee Wojewski?
Yes.
Trustee Benucci?
Yes.
Trustee Lamb?
Yes.
Trustee O'Rourke?
Yes.
Thank you. That motion carries. We're seeking a motion to approve the amended agenda.
So moved.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded to approve the amended agenda. Trustee Peck?
Yes.
Trustee Ruane?
Yes.
Trustee Wojewski?
Yes.
Trustee Benucci?
Yes.
Trustee Lamb?
Yes.
Trustee O'Rourke?
Yes.
Thank you. That motion carries. We're seeking a motion to approve the consent agenda to include minutes of the board meeting held on January 9th, bills paid and bills payable reports for February 6th, cash and investment, revenue and expenditure reports for December, ordinance number 3294, increasing the Class F liquor licenses to 16, and the Class K liquor licenses to 17 for Freedom Brothers Pizzeria, to be located at 11914 South Route 59, Suite 112. So moved.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded to approve items A through D under the consent agenda. Trustee Peck?
Yes.
Trustee Ruane?
Yes.
Trustee Wojewski?
Yes.
Trustee Benucci?
Yes.
Trustee Lamb?
Yes.
Trustee O'Rourke?
Yes.
Thank you. That motion carries. Next item on the agenda is kayak concession agreement for Riverfront Park. We're seeking board consideration of a motion to direct the village attorney to prepare a concession agreement with Naperville Kayak LLC to maintain a kayak concession at the Riverfront Park slash Electric Park West.
So moved.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded. Are there any comments or questions on this item?
Just one for legal. Is there anything additional that we need for holding harmless and indemnifying the village from the service being provided?
I'm going to review this. It's going to be something that's coming back into it, you know, which is directed in. And I'll look at it in detail as to that particular issue, trustee Peck.
Okay. Thank you very much.
To piggyback on trustee Peck's question, any injuries that may occur, since it's an electric park, does it fall to the Riverfront Foundation, or does it fall to the village?
Ultimately, that property is the village-owned property.
Yeah, even if we lease something, I mean, we will, you know, and that's why the issue of indemnification, we will get joined in any legal action as the owner, and then it gets sorted out in litigation. But as owner, we're still ultimately responsible.
I have a couple of suggestions. One, obviously, the sample contract we have is based on Naperville, and there's obviously some things there that don't pertain to us. A couple of things that bother me, though, the grantor seems to be collecting money somehow. Are we expected to do anything to support this with village staff?
I'll turn to Jake to answer the particulars, but I don't believe that that's the...
No. So really, all the concession agreement is providing, we're just basically allowing the privilege for this kayak service to utilize the riverfront. There will be no subsidy, no staff. All cost is bear upon the business. And we would be, we would also be, Village of Plainfield, the Riverfront Foundation would be named as part of the liability insurance under their business as well to be covered.
Yeah, I was looking to make sure, the wording makes sure that we don't, they're supposed to be, the grantor is supposed to be collecting funds for lessons and then reimbursing the concessionaire. And that doesn't make any sense. So if those stuff gets cleaned out, I'm fine with it.
Oh, sure.
The only other thing I would suggest, we're talking about maybe renting bikes and some other things, and paddle boards, wider paddle boards. I'd make sure that's in the agreement. And I'd also ask the applicant to consider canoes sometime down the road. I wouldn't mind putting it in now, because not everybody easily gets into a kayak. At least, I don't think they do, anyway. Canoes are a little bit easier for perhaps older cut of people, or even for smaller kids. It's easier to control them in a canoe rather than a kayak, which is a little bit more typical. So there's something to discuss with them. If it makes sense to them, I would suggest we try to include that.
This is a great program. It's working out well in Naperville, and from the Riverfront Foundation's perspective, it's going to bring more people, make more awareness to all the wonderful things that are offered down there. And we use it quite a bit already. And there's several kayakers out there, so I'm full supporter of this. I hope it pans out as well as it does in Naperville.
Yeah, I just wanted to say thanks to the petitioner for bringing his use to our town, because I think it is going to create a new recreational opportunity for our residents, and at the same time, add focus to the riverfront, which I think is a positive thing as well.
Are there any other comments or questions? Not the motion was made and seconded to direct the village attorney to prepare a concession agreement with Naperville Kayak LLC to maintain a kayak concession at the Riverfront Park slash Electric Park West. Trustee Peck?
Yes.
Trustee Ruane?
Yes.
Trustee Wojewski?
Yes.
Trustee Benucci?
Yes.
Trustee Lamb?
Yes.
Trustee O'Rourke?
Yes.
Thank you. That motion carries. Next item on the agenda is 12549 South Wingstam Street. We're seeking board consideration of a motion to adopt ordinance number 3295, granting approval of a variance to permit a fence up to 30 feet into the corner side yard, but no less than 10 feet from the edge of the sidewalk along Cordelia Street for the property located at 12549 South Wingstam Street.
So moved.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded. Are there any comments or questions on this item?
I have a question for staff. What exactly are the unique circumstances that this homeowner is trying to get around, or?
In the public hearing before the plan commission, the petitioner did provide some information about health of an adult resident at the property with a medical condition that limited their opportunity to be outdoors, so the fence would contribute to some additional outside recreation area. I believe the configuration of the street proximity to a school that generated some additional pedestrian traffic and provided privacy and safety consideration were some of the factors that were discussed.
Is it a privacy fence, or a...
It'll be an open style.
A what?
I think it'll be an open style fence.
Open style. Because I drove through the neighborhood today on my way back, and I didn't see any other fences that had this type of requirement. And I couldn't see why they were looking for one. I thought maybe they had a structure or pool they were trying to get around, and I just wasn't aware with the circumstance. So it's due to health reasons?
That was one of the pieces of information that was presented, that I believe the plan, the zoning board of appeals gave some consideration to a special circumstance.
The concession that was made from the original proposals to move it 10 feet away from the sidewalk. So there's a fair amount of discussion at the plan commission that addressed, you know, how to best do this. If you went by it, I think you'll find that it sticks out a bit. And the reason we don't usually permit signs on corner lots is because it affects their streetscape view. So moving it back some helps a little bit there. But it already sticks out. You see the house more in the fence anyway, so.
Right.
Are there any other comments or questions? Not the motion was made and seconded to adopt ordinance number 3295, granting approval of a fence variance for 12549 South Wingstam Street. Trustee Peck?
Yes.
Trustee Ruane?
Yes.
Trustee Wojewski?
Yes.
Trustee Benucci?
Yes.
Trustee Lamb?
Yes.
Trustee O'Rourke?
Yes.
Thank you. That motion carries. Next item on the agenda is 12443 South Route 59, Unit 102. We're seeking board consideration of a motion to adopt ordinance number 3296, granting approval of the special use for the beauty slash nail salon and body art service known as European Beauty Lounge LLC at 12443 South Route 59, Unit 102.
So moved.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded. Are there any comments or questions on this item?
I think this is a unique service that's coming, or additional service that's coming to town. They have some expertise from Europe. We just recently changed the ordinance, so they need to come through us for approval for this. But it should be an excellent addition. I welcome it as a business, because the way they described it in front of the plan commission, very well thought out. I think it'll be a real contribution to the atmosphere of the village for that kind of service.
Are there any other comments or questions? Not the motion was made and seconded to adopt ordinance number 3296, granting approval of the special use for the beauty slash nail salon and body art service at 12443 South Route 59, Unit 102. Trustee Peck?
Yes.
Trustee Ruane?
Yes.
Trustee Wojewski?
Yes.
Trustee Benucci?
Yes.
Trustee Lamb?
Yes.
Trustee O'Rourke?
Yes.
Thank you. That motion carries. Next item on the agenda is 23904 West Main Street. We're seeking board consideration of a motion to adopt ordinance number 3297, granting approval of the special use for plan development to permit a two-family residential use at 23904 West Main Street.
So moved.
Second.
That motion's been made and seconded. Are there any comments or questions on this item?
Just a quick comment. We discussed this at a previous board meeting, and the consensus was that it'd be a real improvement to the existing property, so. And eventually, if that develops as a commercial area, the owner is said to be willing to allow that to happen. So meanwhile, we get some immediate improvement, and long-term, it fits in with our plans.
Have we had any communication from residents or anyone else in the community about this items that has not been presented to the board yet?
I don't believe there are any public comments during the public hearing. The plan commission held a public hearing as required for the special use request. There was one phone inquiry, and I think once the nature of the request was explained, the caller was satisfied. They were concerned about the condition of the property, and so learning that the property had been sold and the new owner intends to improve the property was, you know, addressed that concern.
Well, thank you very much, Jonathan.
So I hate to bring it up again, Jonathan, but is this the one we talked about in the past with the...
That's correct. So procedurally, the request, the approval for the residential use is by plan development. And as you and I have talked privately, the zoning code permitted use matrix has a couple of different areas where this could be, you know, in the matrix. So as you read across the rows, there's not a special use option for multifamily residential. So this is a special use for plan development, which would permit the two residential units in the B3 zoning district.
Generally, I don't like to vary and put residential in the business districts, but I think the good outweighs the bad in this situation, that they're going to put some money into the property and develop it versus just leaving it the way it is. So I will support this one.
I'm actually the opposite. Unfortunately, I just see it as someone just trying to buy some time and wait for other things to get improved around it. And I've never been a fan of putting residential usage in the middle of a highly trafficked intersection. I'd be afraid if there was kids there. And generally, it's more than likely going to be rental. And I feel this village has a big problem with rental units, and I don't think it's a good usage for that. And by us allowing residential there, we're just giving someone an opportunity to buy more time, which I don't think is the right thing.
Buying the time, by the way, is $50,000. And she's going to put her, there's going to be two apartments, I believe, and her daughter will be one of them. I don't think she's married, so. I understand your point, but there's some other aspects of it, too, that'll come out.
That property was used at a daycare for a long time, so.
That's when there wasn't that many people in the village.
Wow.
And then it was a rental, an illegal rental.
Then it's been sitting vacant for quite a while now, yeah.
And, you know, there's no assurance that this woman's going to spend all this money. She's just saying she's going to do it.
True.
There's no teeth that says she has to do it, so.
Are there any...
Yeah, I have a question. Is there something that can be amended to this that would make this unanimous, that would satisfy what trustee Ruane's asking for, with some sort of teeth that has to do with the future of the property?
Mr. Mayor, if I may address just a couple, you know, I'll reiterate the staff's analysis, at least, and then circle back to address your question. Certainly recognize that the commercial potential, and that's why staff advised the applicant to pursue a plan development, which would retain the commercial zoning, and retain that option or opportunity to be a commercial use in the future, while allowing for the residential by plan development, which had been the condition for a number of years. I think for a period of time, it was the daycare. But it had been, potentially as recently as March of 2016, had been a two-unit residential. If that use were to have continued within six months' time, it would have been permitted as an ongoing non-conforming use. So the plan development would simply restore a condition that had been present as recently as, you know, within the last 12 months or so. But specific to trustee Peck's question, the plan development process does allow for any conditions of approval that would be appropriate to mitigate concerns, whether it be something such as, you know, traffic, lighting, noise, or otherwise. The board could propose a stipulation to require a landscape plan subject to the village's approval or otherwise that would call for some improvements. You know, I can't speak on behalf of the petitioner. I don't know whether they're present this evening to accept those conditions. But if that's the board's determination that the plan development would be appropriate with certain conditions, that those conditions could be addressed at this time.
Well, the other thing to look at, too, is that whole street. There's houses on one side of it. You know, there's, matter of fact, one is a historic home on the other side. And so I think it could be, like, you know, a mixed-use kind of situation. I don't know that, can you really legally do that? Tell somebody, okay, you can do this, but in five years after, turn it into commercial? That would be something, I think, you know, Mr. Harvey would have to answer. But I just, you know, given the condition of it right now, what it looks like and everything, even if it was like the house on the corner, which is commercial for a realty, before it was a realty, it was like a fortune-telling house or whatever that was, and people were living upstairs from there. And so I'm just saying, and plus, all the other homes that are around there. I think it could, I think it could benefit either way. I think that is part of the whole BTD concept, where you could use it for both. Unless I'm missing something, I think that's kind of the whole area's attitude. If you look up and down that street, you've got where Mary Graham lived, you've got where Bonnie Lutter lives, and there's, you know, there's actually homes there, so.
I think the intent of our zoning code is, for the underlying zoning is B3. And I think if you look, I know this is now a planned development, but the intent was not to allow multifamily in a B3 zoning. This went through with a planned unit development, so obviously, it's special circumstances. My concern is, is that, you know, like trustee Ruane, is that, you know, once it's residential, will it ever become commercial? And I think people are looking for more commercial tax base in our town. And I think, once you add value to the property, now it makes it more difficult for somebody to come in and maybe redevelop it, because now the cost is going to be more, because the person that bought it has a higher investment that they want to get back out of it. So that's what my concern is.
Mr. Harvey, can you put a sunset on this? And if we can add any clauses or stipulations, can they sunset this in five years?
You know, you don't have the flexibility you would if this was an annexation agreement, where we have the legal authority, subject to the owner agreeing to it, to impose those kinds of conditions. You have, as Mr. Prue pointed out, the ability to do some, you know, requirements for buffering. But in terms of saying, "This is only going to last this long," no. You, you know, are restricted to, you know, is this the right zoning? And, you know, you could, you know, impose some reasonable, you know, conditions as to buffering, but you don't have the flexibility like you would as to the other item we removed from the agenda, where you can put in any condition, as long as the property owner agrees it isn't illegal under the law. So you're more limited in a situation like this, as Mr. Prue pointed out.
Are there any other comments or questions? Not, there was a motion and a second to adopt ordinance number 3297, granting approval of the special use for plan development to permit a two-story residential use at 23904 West Main Street. Trustee Peck?
Yes.
Trustee Ruane?
No.
Trustee Wojewski?
Yes.
Trustee Benucci?
Yes.
Trustee Lamb?
Yes.
Trustee O'Rourke?
No.
That motion carries for two. Next item on the agenda is the 2017 Irish Parade. We're seeking board consideration of a motion to authorize the road closures as identified in the staff report for the 2017 Irish Parade to be held on Sunday, March 12th.
So moved.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded. Are there any comments or questions on this item?
These are the same closures that have been in place for several years.
Yes.
Including the one from Saturday to Sunday on Chicago to Lockport, on Displanes, I think it is.
No, it's just the one, excuse me, just the one-day closure, the day of the parade. The parade route is closed for roughly around two hours, and then that section of Displanes from Lockport to Chicago is closed for additional hours for a family tent and stuff that goes up there.
It's closed on Saturday, though, right?
Yes. The roads? Yeah.
Request is for Saturday.
Saturday.
Through Sunday, after the parade.
Saturday, late afternoon. Not the parade route? No, no, just the road closure.
Between Chicago...
Displanes. Where the family tents going to be, yes.
One thing, I just want to make sure. And has anybody complained about that? There's some businesses in that area. This is a Saturday, and I'm not sure it has an impact. I just want to make sure that if there, anybody upset with that, we at least know about it now.
We have not received any complaints from any business owners.
You've heard any complaints? The request comes from you, so.
No, no, we've never heard a complaint.
Okay, fine. Just checking. So it's always a good parade. It starts our year in terms of events and...
Yeah, I'm sorry for the confusion. The parade route itself only closes on Sunday. The, that stretch on Displanes, we do close, so they can construct the tent on Saturday.
I know liquor in the tent, it's mainly entertainment and, okay, great.
The only thing I would say is, I like the idea of no more than 80 entries, because the longer the parade, it gets a little, it'll get a little tough on road closures. But I have to agree, too. Last year, there wasn't many people, because it was drizzly and cold. But the year before, I would say that you're being generous with 12,000, because it was...
It was the largest one we've ever had.
Yes, it was big, so.
No, I'd like to say, I mean, I've been part of this parade since its conception. And it's, you know, been supported by the village and the people of the village. And it's become a pretty big thing, you know. A lot of people look forward to it, and a lot of work goes into it, and a lot of people within the village that live in the village and that visit the village appreciate it. So I think it's a great, it's a great addition, you know, for our community. And I'm being biased here, obviously, but, you know, I appreciate all the support from everyone, and ready to go this year. But if anyone wants to help, we need help. Could always use help. It gets bigger every year, and we've pretty much got the same amount of people that help. So if you like volunteering for things, give me a call.
Are there any other comments or questions? Not the motion was made and seconded to authorize the road closures as identified in the staff report for the 2017 Irish Parade to be held on March 12th, 2017. Trustee Peck?
Yes.
Trustee Ruane?
Yes.
Trustee Wojewski?
Yes.
Trustee Benucci?
Yes.
Trustee Lamb?
Yes.
Trustee O'Rourke?
Yes.
Thank you. That motion carries. Next item on the agenda is 2017 Fast Cat 10K. We're seeking board consideration of a motion to authorize the road closures as identified in the staff report for the 2017 Fast Cat 10K to be held on April 1st.
So moved.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded. Are there any comments or questions?
This has a good track record, too, I believe, Chief, so.
Yes, very minimal impact to the village, and they're a great group to work with. They really have their plan in order.
Great.
Are there any other comments or questions? Not the motion was made and seconded to authorize the road closures as identified in the staff report for the 2017 Fast Cat 10K to be held on April 1st. Trustee Peck? Trustee Peck?
Yes.
Trustee Ruane?
Yes.
Trustee Wajowski?
Yes.
Trustee Bonucci?
Yes.
Trustee Lamb? Trustee O'Rourke?
Yes.
Thank you, that motion carries. Next item on the agenda is the 2017 Cruise Nights. We're seeking board consideration of a motion to authorize the road closures as identified in the staff report, for the 2017 Cruise Nights to be held every Tuesday, from June 6th through August 22nd, from 5:00 PM to 9:00 PM, except July 4th. So moved.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded. Are there any comments or questions on this item?
This is perhaps one of our most successful events here, it's very popular every summer, and nobody seems to complain about the roads being closed off on Tuesday, everybody loves it, so it's one of our better events.
Are there any other comments or questions?
I have a comment, the 20 seconds seems to be early. Is that, is that an earlier date? Doesn't it usually go a little later?
It, it usually goes till Labor Day. I don't know why they stepped it one week earlier this year, but normally, it does go to Labor Day.
Okay, so that was the request?
That was the request of the group, yes.
Thank you.
Are there any other comments or questions? Not, the motion was made and seconded, to authorize the road closures as identified in the staff report for the 2017 Cruise Nights. Trustee Peck?
Yes.
Trustee Ruane?
Yes.
Trustee Wajowski?
Yes.
Trustee Bonucci?
Yes.
Trustee Lamb?
Yes.
Trustee O'Rourke?
Yes.
Thank you, that motion carries. Next item on the agenda is 2017 Healthy Driven Harvest 5K. We're seeking board consideration of a motion to authorize the road closures as identified in the staff report, for the 2017 Healthy Driven Harvest 5K to be held on September 24th.
So moved.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded. Are there any comments or questions? Not, I'll proceed with the roll. Trustee Peck?
Yes.
Trustee Ruane?
Yes.
Trustee Wajowski?
Yes.
Trustee Bonucci?
Yes.
Trustee Lamb?
Yes.
Trustee O'Rourke?
Yes.
Thank you, that motion carries. Next item on the agenda is Primrose School of Plainfield. We're seeking board consideration of a motion to adopt the findings of fact of the plan commission, as the findings of fact of the board of trustees, and furthermore, to direct the village attorney to prepare an ordinance granting approval of the special use for the preschool slash childcare facility, known as Primrose School of Plainfield on Lot 2 of the Meyer Napa, Plainfield Re subdivision. So moved.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded. Are there any comments or questions?
I have a question, where is this land bank parking, in terms of the rest of the layout?
I believe it's to the west. They have a graphic that's included.
I couldn't tell from the prints we have exactly where it is, east, west, south.
So is it east of the Napa building?
Correct.
And west of the parking lot?
Yeah, that's correct, so they would, it's actually.
Bill? I think it's right in here.
Yeah, so it'd be west of the parking that they proposed to construct.
They own that already?
That's correct.
Okay. The other question I have has to do with one of my favorite topics, line of sight for in and out. They have only one entrance to this place, unless they come through Napa, and we've got landscape put there, it's, it's trees, trees generally are high enough, but I'm really concerned with shrubs, that Meyer's parking lot has a real problem with shrubs growing too tall, so you can't see it coming up. I would ask that the staff take a real close look at it, and maybe make very, very sure that no shrubs are in the way, and the trees are far enough away not to interfere with people turning in and turning out, because that's the entrance and the exit to this particular location, so.
On the, the topic of traffic congestion, safety, that, those things, I didn't see anywhere in the report, Jonathan, maybe you can speak to it. If you go east on 135th, there from Route 59, there's kind of a de-acceleration or right turn lane, all the way through until you get to this new cut, because this wasn't planned, I'm guessing, when the PUD went through from Meyer, so should we be considering a de-acceleration lane for people making a right turn into this property, because of the new cut?
I think that the standard condition of approval would include compliance with the requirements of the village engineer, so if, if that's identified as a requirement, that that's something that we can coordinate, I think that the expense would probably be something that the applicant would, would want to be aware of at this time, so it hasn't been identified to this point.
I guess I would just raise it up, I don't know if any, I have a concern, I don't know if any of the other trustees have that concern, so if you go east, you can see there's a right turn lane to get into first entrance, a right turn lane to get into the second entrance, and then this was a newly created cut, so it wasn't planned to have a right turn lane, and alls I'm saying is, I think we should consider maybe asking the petitioner to add a de-acceleration or right turn lane, so when people are heading east, you know, they can get out of the way and make their turn safely, that's all.
I would have to agree with that, from a safety point of view, if it could be done, I'm not sure who owns the property, who would do it, but it would be nice to have that, because there'll be, you know, quite a few people dropping off and exiting, and it'd be nice to not have those people slow down traffic on 135th Street, because there is a lot of traffic on 135th.
I agree, that would make the most sense, and I think it would address some safety issues.
We'll be sure to have the village engineer take a look at that, it is regularly a requirement, but we'll make sure that that definitely is spoken to, to Scott, as he's reviewing this.
And then the other issue on the engineering is the, I'm assuming it's correct, but I guess I'll just ask, you know, and anytime you make those kinds of turns in the driveway leading to that, it looks like kind of a right angle turn there, just to confirm that those radiuses, with all the big SUVs and everything, that it's not going to create a, a touch point or potential for people making those turns.
I got a question about the parking bank. Exactly how does that work, John? When we have a, a business that's asking for a special use to reduce the, you know, the parking requirement, which I think is completely apt, there's no need to pave the world when you don't have to, and create hard space, and we get a little more green area, but what happens if this business changes use, and it becomes a regular retail establishment? What activates that parking, that banked parking? Would the next person be required to put that parking in, or would it be their own choice?
It would essentially be their choice, what the plan commission asked for, and this was a specific request, they wanted the applicant to demonstrate for when the, the project and the plans were here before the village board, was that there's sufficient room available to add the parking? So if there's a parking need, they're demonstrating, you know, here we can, we can provide, I believe it's 61 parking spaces, there isn't a condition that says, you know, if the village were to go out in two years and deem the parking lot full, that the village would require this parking to be constructed, it's merely to demonstrate that there's room available, and from an engineering standpoint, here's what the striping might look like, the drive aisle width, what, you know, the parking can be accommodated. As I think the, you know, the trustees are familiar, parking ratios are, you know, more of an art than a science, for the most part, are, if everything was built with a required parking, there would be excess parking, you know, 95% of the year, so staff has been reasonably comfortable deferring to an owner-operator to say, you know, we, we really believe we need 35 or 40 parking spaces, even if the parking section of the code says maybe we need 55 or 60. So that this operator is, is very comfortable, they have several other locations, and based on that track record and understanding of the number of kind of family trips and carpooling, that they're comfortable with the parking as proposed, however, they are demonstrating that there is sufficient room on property that they control to add parking if they determine that it's necessary.
And I guess my only other comment about the bank parking is, in the same sentence about not meeting the full zoning requirements for parking and landscaping, wouldn't it make sense that they would landscape this bank parking area, instead of just leaving it like a, a blank field that just dries out in the summer? Was that a possibility to put some landscaping there?
Certainly.
Yeah, there's some along the road, but I think you're right, there's nothing in the banked area itself, and there's nothing on the plan, so.
It's just going to look kind of like a vacant lot, I'm just trying to avoid that, that's all.
Good point.
Are there any other comments or questions? Not, the motion was made and seconded, to direct the village attorney to prepare an ordinance granting approval of the special use for the preschool slash childcare facility, known as Primrose School of Plainfield, on Lot 2 of the Meyer-Napa Plainfield Re subdivision. Trustee Peck?
Yes.
Trustee Ruane?
Yes.
Trustee Wajowski?
Yes.
Trustee Bonucci?
Yes.
Trustee Lamb?
Yes.
Trustee O'Rourke?
Yes.
Thank you, that motion carries. Next item on the agenda is 15233 South Joliet Road. We're seeking board consideration of a motion to approve the site plan review for the redevelopment and expansion of the structure, what? Oh, sorry. We're seeking board consideration of a motion to approve the site plan review for the proposed Primrose School of Plainfield Development Lot 2 of the Meyer-Napa Plainfield Re subdivision.
So moved.
Second. Motion's been made and seconded. Are there any comments or questions? Not, we'll proceed with the roll. Trustee Peck?
Yes.
Trustee Ruane?
Yes.
Trustee Wajowski?
Yes.
Trustee Bonucci?
Yes.
Trustee Lamb?
Yes.
Trustee O'Rourke?
Yes.
Thank you, that motion carries. Next item on the agenda is 15233 South Joliet Road. We're seeking board consideration of a motion to approve the site plan review for the redevelopment and expansion of the structure at 15233 South Joliet Road, subject to the condi-, to the conditions noted in the staff report. So moved.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded. Are there any comments or questions? Hearing none, I'll proceed with the roll. Trustee Peck?
Yes.
Trustee Ruane?
Yes.
Trustee Wajowski?
Yes.
Trustee Bonucci?
Yes.
Trustee Lamb?
Yes.
Trustee O'Rourke?
Yes.
Thank you, that motion carries. Next item on the agenda is 24215 West Lockport Street. We're seeking board consideration of a motion to approve the certificate of appropriateness for the ongoing renovations for the adaptive reuse of the home at 24215 West Lockport Street, located in the downtown historic district.
I'd like to make a motion that we stipulate the certificate of appropriateness that we have signed ourselves, but the applicant has not signed, so if we stipulate that, I don't want to approve it, because they haven't, they haven't accepted it, so I'd like to stipulate this is what we would like to have done in this certificate appropriateness. A second? Second.
So the stipulation is that the applicant signs it?
I'm sorry?
What's the stipulation, that they sign it?
Well, no, the, what, the existing one that we have signed is what we want, and if they agree with that, then we end up approving it, they have to accept our, what we stipulate, if I understand it, so.
Mr. Harvey, if I may, just a brief overview of the, of the project, and then I think that'll bring trustee Lamb's recommendation into, into some focus. This is an ongoing renovation project, or conversion of the, what had, for a long time been a home, at 24215 West Lockport Street, into a real estate office, and staff met with the, the new owner, the people who purchased the property about this time last year, and identified that, given the project is located within our downtown historic district, which has since been, become, you know, recognized on the National Register of Historic Places, that the owner could participate in a federal historic preservation rehabilitation tax credit program, to get some financial relief for both exterior modifications, which are subject to our certificate of appropriateness process, and also some of the interior remodeling costs that, that are involved as well. So at staff's recommendation, and with the leadership of our Historic Preservation Commission, the petitioner approached the Illinois Historic Preservation Agency, and had been working with IHPA for a number of months, and through, I believe, August and September, and due to a breakdown in communication, the petitioner received their approval from IHPA for the rehabilitation tax credit project, and then proceeded to construction without immediately coming to the village and requesting a certificate of appropriateness. So this case is a little bit unusual, typically, the board would, would act on a COA request before the project moves forward to construction, because this is a little bit in mid-process, there are some unusual aspects to this case. One is that the siding material was removed and replaced with a, with a more modern material that was based on incomplete or incorrect information that was presented to the HPA, so staff would, would just ask that the record kind of reflect that that was an unusual circumstance here, that typically, we would not like to see the original siding material removed and replaced, and I think that's documented in the certificate of appropriateness document that our HPC has prepared. And then separately, there's a, kind of an accent siding material, a scalloped or a fish scale siding material used on the upper portion, the pediments above the dormers here, that the HPC staff and the HPC are recommending be removed, and just used the predominant siding material for the entire siding of the dormers. So it's those main pieces of information that are noted in the COA document, that once the board, if the board wishes to approve that, COA as recommended by the HPC, staff would have the petitioner sign, and so we would, we would ask that those, the scalloped or fish scale siding material be removed and replaced.
Is this a retroactive, like, certificate of appropriateness, so you're telling me they've already started the work before they?
Kind of concurrent, yeah, ideally, that they would come through this process prior, we advised, when we met with them on the property, in, it was February of 2016, directed them to IHPA and, and.
And they didn't comply with the.
Misunderstanding, or they just felt that they, that was, eliminated the need for local review, so.
So what's, oh, no, no, go ahead.
So they got approval from the IHPA, and then they deviated from what they told them they were going to do as well, and put up separate siding than what they told?
No, they didn't deviate from what the IHPA paperwork initially said.
The IHPA supported removal and replacement of the siding, with the understanding that the siding was a Masonite material, and it was, the, the majority of it was wood, cedar clapboard, which had the IHPA known that, I think they would have recommended restoring the original wood siding material. But the, the IHPA understands that, that what happened, they're, they're not in disagreement, they support the new siding as, as has been installed. And frankly, staff thinks it looks, you know, it looks nice, I think it's an enhancement to the, to the downtown.
John, what's the consequence? I mean, if they don't sign it, what's, what's, what's the, I mean, literally, if they don't sign it, we have it, but they don't sign it, what's, what's the big deal to them? They've already got this approval to try to get this money returned, and what happens?
Yeah, we would have the ability to withhold a certificate of occupancy for the, the work that's ongoing, and I, I believe there's common ground, I mean, the square footage of material is, is very nominal, so on a cost basis, it might be $100 or $200 worth of material, I mean, it's regrettable that things have, have kind of come out of sequence, but it's not a, in, in the grand scheme of the, the scope of the project, it's not a huge percentage that the, that staff and the HPC are asking to be revisited.
Can we put a stipulation in there, that, that we approve it based on that they have to, they have to meet the requirements of what the village is asking them to do?
Yeah, that's exactly what the.
Otherwise, no certificate of occupancy? Is that what you're trying to make? Okay.
I believe it's what it came out.
No, excuse me, do they understand they have to remove the, like, the fish scale type siding?
That's correct, so if the, if the board were to approve the COA this evening, would that requirement, staff would, would implement that?
The building, the building contractor has been contacted already, I believe that's right, Mr. Goska, right?
Yes, they are aware that they have to remove it before they get any kind of occupancy certificate.
Okay.
Is that sufficient, Mr. Lamb?
Yes.
Okay.
As Jonathan said, it's not that big a deal, it's just a matter of, it should be done, that's the agreement that was made at the plan, at the HPC meeting, I was there, they just seemed to have forgotten that, so I'm just trying to honor their agreement, their, what was asked for, the, at the end of the agreement, it was there or not, they asked, was asked for that at that time, so, and it's what we'd like to have, it looked better without it.
It's easier to get forgiveness than permission?
Ah, that was, that's sort of the action, yeah, but sometimes you need to ask, otherwise you don't get permission, so.
The, the motion that's on the floor is to stipulate the certificate of appropriateness for the ongoing renovations for the adaptive reuse of the home at 24215 West Lockport Street, located in downtown historic district. That motion was made and seconded. That motion was made and seconded. Trustee Peck.
Yes.
Trustee Burein.
Yes.
Trustee Wojkowski.
Yes.
Trustee Bonucci.
Yes.
Trustee Lamb.
Yes.
Trustee O'Rourke.
Yes.
Thank you, that motion carries. Administrators' report?
None tonight.
Management Services' report?
No report.
Engineers' report?
Yes, I have one item for you this evening. This is related to the 127th Street Pumping Station. That's the pumping station on the south side of 127th Street, just west of the river. That's the main pumping station that pumps lake water into the village. The project involves replacing three of the variable frequency drives that run the pumps inside the station. If you recall, one of the VFDs was replaced late last summer on an emergency basis. So we went up to bid to replace the other three main VFDs and took bids on January 26th for that project. And we received two bids, very tight bids on that project. And we would recommend a word to Pro temp of Illinois. They have done work in the station before, so they are familiar with it.
And this is the same as we discussed at a previous meeting. You just now went out and got the bids for it, so now we exactly know how much money we're talking about.
Correct.
Thank you.
It, it does include some controls work in the station as well to talk to the computer system that runs the pumps, some upgrades.
Yeah, 10 years old and you're updating the whole thing to more modern system than.
Yeah, it's amazing how much technology changes in 10 years, but it has.
Yep.
Do you guys remember what the cost was when we had to do the emergency fix?
It was a little over $70,000, correct?
Turn this on here. It actually, it came in segments because initially, if, if you recall back, when, when we went in to replace this particular VFD, we estimated the cost for the VFD itself to be about $50,000. And what we had found out that since technology does change, that they not only do not make that particular VFD style anymore, so we couldn't find a new one, but they don't make a reman-, remanufactured unit either. So we were kind of put in the position where we had to replace the, the VFD and that's what the board had authorized. Once the entire cabinet went to the factory, they found that the diode bridge needed to be replaced that was just under $5,000 and that also the entire cabinet had to be removed, transported, tested with the new equipment in it, and then replaced. And in essence, after that was all completed, we're still on the old computer system too as well. So it communicates in an old computer language that isn't currently common anymore. And that's, in essence, obsolete as well. So this is an entire upgrade for the other three, including a computer upgrade for the emergency repair that we had completed as well. At the end of the day, keep in mind that we pump approximately $10 million worth of, of water, so revenue through the station, it's our main station. And then also, due to the technology, the way these VFDs work, they actually save the village about $100,000 a year in electricity. So if you were on the old-style technology, you would, the payoff for these units would be within three years. And to Derek's point, they've lasted 10, 11 years. They've really outlived their useful life. And if we went into another, our concern is if we went in another emergency repair situation, again, not only would we pay more, but the uncertainty of actually finding the parts to get it replaced properly in a timely fashion. So the goal is to get it completed before we hit the late June, July, August peak periods when we need all four pumps. So hopefully, I know that was a long-winded answer to your question, but hopefully that covers the ground, some that we had talked about back in October and just an update for the board tonight.
And, and, and just to add on to that, the computer technology, we kind of foresaw this when we did the emergency repair and set it up to be able to switch over when the next three were replaced. And we included that switch over in this project as well.
So when you do the kind of quick math, 70 for the repairs, but three of these with other technologies, roughly 100. But when we did the emergency repair, we really didn't get up to the level that we're purchasing for the 100, correct? And some of that value is going into making the emergency repair compatible with the new three?
Correct.
So we don't need to replace the emergency one at this point?
Correct.
We just upgraded.
Correct.
Thank you.
What's the life cycle on these, these new ones that are proposing here?
I would expect at least 10 years out of them, again, hopefully 20, but I, I wouldn't expect more than 20. So I think these were, I believe, 12 or 13 years old. So we did get, you know, the life out of them, but yeah, not much more than 15, 20 years at the most.
Are there any other comments or questions? Not, we're seeking board consideration of a motion to authorize Pro Temp of Illinois, Inc., the low bidder, to complete the 127th Street Lake Michigan Water Pumping Station VFD replacement project at a total cost of $333,300.
So moved.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded. Trustee Peck.
Yes.
Trustee Burein.
Yes.
Trustee Wojkowski.
Yes.
Trustee Bonucci.
Yes.
Trustee Lamb.
Yes.
Trustee O'Rourke.
Yes.
Thank you, that motion carries.
Before we go on, since we're on the, the tank is how old, 10 years?
It was constructed in 2003, so 14 years.
It's back that far.
It would be 14.
Have we, I, I noticed there's streaks coming down, which I assume are mold. We went by some other towns, similar tank, and it looked pretty nice. Could we get ours to that condition one of these days? It's probably power washed and I would assume it's a mold streaks, but.
Yeah, we, we can definitely get some estimates. You know, as the board will recall, a couple of years ago, we did have a firm come in and, and clean the water towers, which that has been approximately three years ago. And the agents that they use to prevent mold from occurring again and protect the paint has, has done very well because the, the water towers look really in good shape. So we'll be happy to get some estimated costs for that report.
If it could be, it's a pretty obvious feature in town, so. There'd be a lot of traffic by it, too.
No problem.
Planning Department report?
No report.
Building Department report?
I have the Building and Code Enforcement report for the month of December. Be glad to answer any questions.
Public Works report? Police Chiefs report?
No report.
Attorneys' report?
Had no report this evening.
Reminders?
February 7th is our planning commission.